Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask for is agenda changes.
We have no changes to the agenda to present this evening, Mr. Mayor, from staff.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public forum. Is there anybody here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public forum and move on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, if there's no questions or discussion, I would move to approve the consent agenda for Monday, November 8th.
Second. Have the motion and the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, consent agenda passes. We have no unfinished business, so we're gonna move right into new business right away. And item one is discussion of developer's agreement for Cedar Meadows. Ethan, you gotta lead in for us on that.
Yeah, the, had a meeting since our last council meeting with the developers and they are requesting the city, or have countered the forty percent letter of credit language that council directed bond council to put into that developer's agreement. And I believe they're here this evening to present their reasoning of why they're requesting that to still be at a lower amount. So if you would like to recognize them so they can speak with you all.
We do have the Weber brothers here this evening. We'll see who drew the short straw, and it looks like Alan it is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I come before you this evening to discuss the development in Cedar Meadows. We are motivated to make changes in our community. We're always looking for opportunities to make Halsted a better place to accept new residents, to bring students to our schools, where they can be involved in this nice school that we have here in town. Also to be involved in sports programs and other educational activities. Like to bring employees and customers to our businesses on Main Street, employees to our city's staff, members to our churches, teachers, coaches, maintenance workers, administrators to our schools, and that's just to name a few. One of the first things that people look for when they're moving into town is a place to live. At the moment, we have very few places for them to choose from. It's gonna take over $600,000 just to get started with three spec homes. We're asking for a compromise. We would like to offer to purchase the four lots at the end of Stittsman and Main Street that are part of the current Powers property. We will continue to donate land for city streets and easements. Our goal is to preserve our capital so that we can get the ball rolling on building houses that will add value to our community. We're passionate about taking steps to complete tasks that are put together by Halsted Strategic Planning Committee. The committee would like to see Halsted have housing for seniors that are zero-entry patio homes. The committee would like to see Main Street go through, through Halsted to Fourteenth Street, and encourage real estate development to meet the needs of our community, just to name a few, but there are many more. We are confident. We believe in Halsted. We understand that there are risks involved. We understand risk. For over thirty years, we've been in Halsted. We've been farmers. We've been landlords. We've been in the restaurant business, and recently we've accepted the responsibility of seeing to it that Halsted will continue to grow in Cedar Meadows, where we have started our track record at the corner of Fourteenth and Main. We are here to stay the course regardless of difficulties or discouragement. I guess you could say we kinda have the stomach for it. We allow our city council to understand that you guys know what it's like to stick your neck out, and so do we. We understand taking risks. With all that being said, we're here tonight to ask the city to take into consideration our offer to accept seventy percent of the cost of the project, and that we will accept thirty percent of the cost of the project to do Main Street and Stittsman Street. We appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done, and thank you for your time this evening.
I have one thing to say real quick, that I am excusing myself from conversation not due to conflict of interest, which there is none, that in the appearance of code of ethics. Okay, I'll open it up for you, council, to ask if there's any questions you'd like at this time. I would say that because it looks like those four particular lots will be part of our discussion in the next agenda item, that we leave them out of this conversation at this time and just talk about the letter of credit.
You look like you're gonna say something?
I'm about to, yeah. I'm formulating a thought. We, if I may.
Yeah, sit, go ahead.
When we're considering businesses coming to Halsted, new business, we would consider a tax abatement. We don't have that opportunity to do with developers. There's no tax abatement. But once you complete a property, it becomes a taxable entity. So it adds to our tax roll immediately upon completion of property. We have to balance the risk of the develop, what, the thirty or forty percent? We have to balance that with our citizens, and I would be open to, I mean, we all agreed forty percent was a good number, given that you've already performed at fifty percent. So I think forty percent was a fair number, but I would be willing to consider thirty-five as an alternative.
Well, I, you know, I don't think, believe circumstances have changed with your plan and how you're gonna go about doing this, so I'm thinking all of that is still the same as it was last meeting. And rather than just having a long dialogue, I'm just gonna say I am still very comfortable at forty percent myself.
Echo kinda what George was saying. I, I think I'm still at the forty percent based off of the discussions that we had previously and with our bond council as well with that risk too. I, I'm not at the point where I'm ready to go lower than that right now at this point. I, I just think there's, there's too much risk on the city's part at this point. It's not to say that you guys won't be able to do it, do exactly what you've stated that you, you know, that you're gonna do, or do what you've shown us that you've actually been able to do as well. I just, at this point, I'm just not ready for that risk, that much more risk on it. So I, I'm still at the forty percent.
And I'm comfortable at the, at the thirty-five percent that Ed has proposed. And that's, that's where I'm at, again, with not getting into a real long, drawn-out discussion, but I'm comfortable with the thirty-five.
I have one additional. I, I understand why you're suggesting going to thirty, but one of the concerns I have is if we, if we grant that to you guys, then the next developer, if there ever is one, is gonna come in and say, "How come you're not doing that for me now?" And I think we need to, you've performed at the fifty percent level. Going to forty, we're comfortable with. Compromise to thirty-five, but you, I mean, we still need to make sure that we're tiering it at the point where you guys get the benefit, but a new contractor coming in doesn't say, "Well, now you gave it to Weber's. Why can't I have that?" I think we have to watch out for that. It may never happen, but I think we have to look at that as a potential problem sometime more down the road.
So if I can ask Denise and Ed, what's, what's driving you guys the five percent decrease? Just, I'm curious, just to try to...
I think it just frees up more money for them to be able to do and to build spec homes quicker. And then as they get those spec homes turned over, then it just, it just gives them more money to be able to do more and have more available.
That's exactly my reasoning. It gives them more cash in hand to invest in spec homes and put property out there that can be immediately for sale.
Because what does it take you to turn a property? About what, three to six months, once it's started?
Oh, it kinda depends on the time of year.
On the year. So anywhere from hundred and twenty to, hundred and twenty days to, what's, a hundred and eighty days?
Well, I mean, properties have been selling within twenty-four hours here in town, so...
They have been, once they come up, so. And, and also too, it, it also helps free up capital that if they do get something that's purchased prior to, you can't really close on that until it's completed. So then that just gives them a little bit more to start building. If they're gonna do three and they get the one sold, then they can start building the fourth one without having to wait for the closure of the first one.
I think your stated objective is to always have one in construction.
Right.
And if we can help them with that capital, to keep one in construction at all times, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
How much capital is that five percent gonna free up for you guys?
Well, I guess, Ethan, I guess we're still trying to put that bottom-line number together.
Well, Eddie, you had, you, because you compared the fifty to the twenty, right, at our work session? What did you come up with that twenty percent? Do you remember? Okay, because we can just take that number and divide by four, I think.
Yeah, the letter of credit's gonna be based off of the improvements that would be assigned to the benefit district, which, for a rough number, is basically seven hundred and fifty thousand. So each, each ten percent represents seventy-five thousand dollars as far as what needs secured. Now, how that translates on what the financial institution requires for the difference between, say, a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar letter of credit versus a three-hundred-thousand-dollar letter of credit. As far as comparing thirty to forty percent, that, I mean, obviously, we don't have an answer for from the city's side. And I don't know what the financial institutional difference of how much capital they have to put up for that, that discrepancy, but you'd take, you know, thirty-seven, five off of that, you know, for that five percent difference, so.
I guess, does it make any difference to the council if, you know, since we're gonna try to buy part of the Powers property, you know, if that kinda takes a little debt load off the city also?
Depends on what we sell it to you for.
True. And you know, you brought up taxes. I think when we were in Ethan's office, we kinda threw together some of the, the larger companies, you know, that pay taxes to the city of Halsted. You know, if, I think, if we come up with like sixty, sixty-seven houses, you know, we're, we're right up there with some of the, the biggest contributors in the city, so.
Is that sixty-seven just on this area that you're developing, or is that including the other two areas as well? That's what I thought, just trying to clarify, just...
Well, I'm gonna stick with my forty percent. You know, every seven years, we see the economy do this. I mean, we, we just see it doing that. I was visiting with someone the other day. It was a pretty affluent individual and just, they're protecting themselves, and they're setting themselves up to protect themselves financially. And I hope it keeps going. The markets, everything's doing great right now. But there's gonna come a time where it's gonna come back and come back down, and I don't want to see you be a casualty, and I don't wanna see the city be a casualty. I think we're mutually protected reasonably at that forty percent.
I'm, I'm still at the forty percent with the, with the reduction like we had talked about over time. I mean, we can talk about, you know, do we reduce that, you know, what did we say, fifty percent, or what did we say, occupancy?
The, as, as written, it was a fifty percent release of the letter of credit upon fifty percent occupancy, and then the remainder can be released once seventy-five percent was obtained.
I mean, I'm willing to negotiate that aspect of it.
I would be willing to also, you know, go forty percent on occupancy or forty-five percent on occupancy and start, somehow work those numbers to where it, it helps them out, but yet we're still protected.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alan. Now let's move on to the next item under new business, and that's discussion of offers to purchase city-owned property. Let Ethan lead us into this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, as Alan mentioned, they've offered twenty-four thousand to purchase lots, one through four of the Powers' first edition currently owned by the city. We also received an offer today that I sent to you all via email for twenty-five thousand from Daphne May Properties, also for lots one through four. And that's the first offer of, of city-owned land in the Powers' addition that we received offers on since our last meeting. Also, there was offers from Tessa Winling and Denise Reese on a basically roughly half of the reserve that abuts each of their respective properties that would be on the west side of the Main Street easement that goes through the Powers' first edition. And there are some maps in your packet to kind of try and illustrate those. Both of those offers were basically a thousand dollars for, for those respective portions of that reserve, so. Just making the council aware of, of those, you know, actions. We have not formally solicited for bids or anything, you know, in terms of any of this property, but there are offers on it, so. It's, it's up for yours discussion. You have the staff recommendations. As far as on the reserve, we feel the request for right of first refusal would be from a staff where we would, would feel most comfortable with the city negotiating just until Main Street actually gets put in and there's a little more work done on the park plan. We just feel at this time, it's really hard to say whether or not the city would have a use, be it, you know, overflow parking or, again, if the, as the plans are engineered and they actually start doing construction, you know, if the road, for some reason, would have to be shifted farther to the west, we just feel that, you know, there's still unknown whether the city would need access to that reserve for any reason. But that being said, you know, if everything goes and, and it, there's not a lot of reason for the city to retain that small strip of land either, because there's no viable use for the city going forward. If Main Street would fall within the easements and, and the sidewalks, and we don't need it for, say, something related to the, to the Lehman Park, then obviously I don't feel there's a lot of reason for us to keep that small of a strip of land. The, as far as the offers on the Powers lot, you know, the, as we've had discussion with the bond council stuff, there's some things that, from a administrative point, are a little bit easier if the city is not in ownership of those, like when they go to form benefit districts and that. But the city does have the right to retain ownership and petition itself to go into the benefit district, so you're not, I mean, it's not a requirement that we need to sell this now, so that is largely up for you all from a policy direction of what you feel is advisable.
I don't have a problem with the first, the negotiating, the right of first refusal with the pro, the adjacent property owners. I think that'd be the right thing to do on those two pieces of ground.
But I think we need to retain the right to use this as we see fit, as we develop that property further.
You just looking for consensus there, Ethan?
Actually, if you want us to negotiate that in terms of a contract, probably a motion?
The contract itself then can be approved later if, if we have it as a direction.
So tonight, we're gonna extend first right of refusal on those adjacent properties to those adjacent property owners. If and when we decide to sell it.
Yeah.
I think that's just, like you said, it's just dependent upon how that road and everything else is gonna shift when we start getting into that, that build there.
Well, we need better definition on the benefit district, so we know exactly where that ground's gonna be.
Right.
And I'm prominence, yeah, down the road for fifteen-foot of frontage. The city doesn't wanna have to mow it, so. Is that all you need on that item, Ethan?
Is there any desired action for you all this evening as far as the other two offers on lots one through four? Just taking those offers under advisement for...
Well, we've had two, two different entities want, want, make offers on them. Do we go to a sealed bid on this or something? Is that how to handle that? On, on, I'm asking.
You can. I mean, it's, again, this isn't something we've, you know, it was, it was brought up by, in a work session, and, and, you know, the council just said, "Hey, make us an offer and we'll consider it." So that's basically what you have on the table now, is, is people that knew that have put offers forward for that property. The city, again, we haven't solicited, and you can do a sealed bid process. At this point, I mean, the offers came in so late, I can't advise you on whether those are fair, you know, fair and reasonable offers to you all or not. We haven't had time to really look into that specific offer. I just can tell you what was in the packet of, there is some logistical things as we continue with setting up the benefit districts and not, that if ownership is not in the city, makes that a little more streamlined than if the city is also an owning party on that property.
Is it premature to be considering these now, or...
I think you can consider. I mean, I mean, you don't have to take action. You can just acknowledge that you've received two offers and you're...
Is there a benefit to selling the property to the developer versus a private party outside of the development? Or is there no benefit?
I would...
I know the city, we talked about getting out from under it to streamline the process of getting everything approved under one developer's ownership.
Yeah, I mean, a, a single party owning it, in theory, you know, you're only negotiating with one party as opposed to two or, or more, but as far as, yeah, again, that's more for you guys to decide on, on the wherewithal of the people offering to, to buy the city property, whether you think, you know...
I, I kinda like to weigh in in favor of a sealed bid. We had, we had one offer from the Weber's that was part of a public record, and now we have a second offer that is slightly higher, which seems to me like we oughta have a, I mean, we oughta go to sealed bid, and that, that way we have a fair sale of property.
Well, my thing is with it too, is that when I, when I look at the stuff, I, we know what the Weber's are gonna do with the property, right? We've been in discussion with this for a very long time with, you know, different things and spec houses out there. I would kinda like to know what's going to happen or what type of use that property is gonna have with this other buyer that we've gotten information on, because it's kinda odd to me. Does that make sense?
I think this time, the best thing would be to acknowledge that we have the offers and to table any response until we have the benefit district set up where we can clearly define the property lines with property measurements and things like that. Quite frankly, those lots are not ready to be sold yet, in my opinion. Brad, you might weigh in. I can see...
Yeah, there's, there's kind of a two-step process at a minimum. You've got multiple opportunities for alternatives for disposition. First, you have to decide if you wanna sell them, and if so, you, doing due diligence here would be to find out, what are they worth? Haven't done that. We're just going on what the offers are. You can certainly take those as they are based upon, well, we have an anticipated use, and we've, we've certainly evaluated property recently that way as well for purposes of disposition. But I think you can slow this down just a little bit, and I would agree to defining those benefit districts and knowing what you've got before you determine whether you wanna do anything with it. Then, what do you wanna do with it in terms of, do you wanna sell it at this point? Are there other alternatives that would create a reason for you to maintain it for any length of time? And if you do wanna sell it, then go to the next step of finding out, well, what's it worth? And then if you wanna accept sealed bids, or say, you know, "We're offering this for sale first, first and best and highest bidder that meets this standard or above." Most of the properties right now are selling above what the asking prices are, but that doesn't mean these will. I'm just saying, there's a number of ways for you to go about that that would be fairly deliberate and maximize the gain to the taxpayer. I think just considering the two offers as they stand tonight in isolation without a lot of these other things being checked off for us would probably be premature.
Okay.
Council, everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Well, that'll move us on to our next agenda item, and that's discussion of 2022 Governing Body Manual and New Member Orientation. I guess Ethan has something for us on that.
Yeah, I'm just looking for, I will send out edits that have been made that just incorporate, you know, any changes or meaningful developments since the last governing body training. We've, we've done this since I took the position of administrator. It's, I feel, very best practice for oncoming and continuing elected officials to attend this training, where we talk about things of like how meetings are running, you know, property quorum, staff interaction, just kinda give a, you know, a thirty-thousand-foot view of the city and its departments and some of our current projects and challenges. So just wanting, one, to let you know that I'll be sending that out, and would appreciate your comments on anything that you would like to see added or, or think could be done to improve that. But two, I guess, to put on the agenda and also talk to our recent elected, or recently elected officials that would be new to the body, so we can start making contact with them to try and find a date that will work both with the seated members and those that will be coming on in January. We do try and have everyone, both the newly elected and, and the transitioning council at that meeting, so hopefully they can pass on some of what they've learned in their time on the council. So just, I guess, looking to make sure that that is something you all wish to continue to do, because there is, you know, some staff time and coordination that has to be involved in getting that all set up. And typically, we do that in early December, so that the newly elected officials have kind of a primer before they actually get seated in January.
I've always appreciated you doing it, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think it's a good thing.
It's a great learning opportunity.
It's a good refresher for us, too.
Okay, we will get the ball rolling on that and check your emails for that update, please.
Okay, you're satisfied with your feedback there, Ethan?
Aye.
We do have one executive session on the agenda tonight, and I would entertain the motion for that now.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session for thirty minutes to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to the consultation of an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 754319B2, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 8:00 PM.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to move into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we will move into executive session.
Okay, we are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we'll move on to the report section of the agenda. And it'll be governing body first. I'm gonna start with you, Ed.
I have nothing tonight.
George?
Nothing, sir.
Mike?
Nope, I'm good.
Stan?
Nope.
Denise?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay, the council's playing shy, so you're up, Ethan. It's manager's report.
Oh, just a second here. Opened everything but that.
Okay. You might as well have said something.
(laughing) My fault. City departmental activities for the previous month were as follows. Police reported 145 calls for service, 36 traffic stops and 20 criminal cases. Police staff are currently looking into the details of potentially acquiring stationary license plate reading cameras that are being utilized by several other police departments in our area and have shown some success in deterring or solving crimes. The 2021 Durango has officially been ordered and delivery is anticipated in January of 2022. Fire reported 22 calls for service, the majority being EMS assist calls, and then they did have three auto aid structure fire calls. Some of the new rescue equipment that was funded in part by the AFG grant has arrived and been placed into service on engine 22. EMS reported 60 calls for service with 58% being in Halsted and 42% being in Cedric for the month. This brings their yearly run total to 508. Staff are working on implementing training for all EMS staff to go through the certified emergency vehicle operator course with training specific to the ambulance operations. Wedgewood reported that rounds played are staying steady as long as the weather continues to hold, and they still have one tournament scheduled. Clubhouse hours have been modified to 10 to 5 as we enter the off-season, and then the winter rates officially started November 5. Fairways have also begun to be roped off in an effort to minimize winter kill. Wedgewood staff are working on tree maintenance and leaf removal and coordinating with Regir on warranty work for some items in the clubhouse that need addressed. The John Deere fairway mower is currently being refurbished at Vanwall, and the new turbine blower is--has arrived and is at the course. October, Public Works completed seven building inspections, installed two new water meter shut-off valves and one new water meter pit, replaced one gas service and installed one gas service. Levy mowing, winterization of the pool and ball diamond facilities, removal of five dead animals from city streets, installed the engine braking and no soliciting signs at city limits, performed limb pickup and clean storm drains following the last heavy windstorm. They helped set and take down the barricades for the arts and crafts festivals and had two staff members find time to attend the Kansas Pipeline Safety Seminar. And currently this week, we have clerk staff at the Clerks Institute in Wichita for week-long training, and we are looking at scheduling interviews this week for the open public works position for those applicants we have received that would move forward in that process. And that is all I have this evening unless there's any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Ethan?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.